Morning, we call the board of supervisors in the session. We'll be starting our August 1st meeting with an update from our county engineer, Russ Weber. Russ?
Morning. Good morning. I'm just going through the list here. So the old Farley Rockville paving project is now completed. Um, heading down Old Massey Road, the River City was in there and completed the HMA overlay. And so now it's just finishing up some shoulders and entrance transitions, paint lanes to follow, and then that project will be substantially complete as well. Sundown Road, so this morning they are gonna pave that half mile stretch of regrade, just to kind of get it covered up. And it's either they stay there or River City, sorry, would stay there or move to Hovercorn. So between those two projects, they're, one of them's gonna get overlaid, you know, soon or this week. North Bankson, Hickory Valley, again, Taylor plans on doing one after another. We don't know which one they're gonna do first, but it's gonna be sometime, hopefully this month. Goose Hill, again, this month, hopefully we'll get prime contractor Progressive Structures in there to get started on the culvert work. Thunder Road, Taylor has, working on both box culvert locations, and they will continue to do so this week. Hovercorn, again, um, everything's ready for HMA overlay. They completed all the culverts last week. And so, yeah, between Hovercorn and Sundown Road, either one of those roads would be paved this week. James Flanagan, subcontractor Keter should be in there hopefully this month, completing that one. That one will go first, and then as time allows, he will work in that 2022 miscellaneous culverts. So the John Deere build project, Pierce Tobin has continued grading on, in preparation of the South Roundabout. They'll continue to do so this week and look to start installing storms who are in the roundabout. And as far as arterial portion, Pierce Tobin has started Phase Two on the Asbury intersection. The east side of Asbury will be closed, traffic has been shifted to one-on-one, aware of it. And they gave me a date of August 31st to complete Phase Two, so. Any questions?
Jay, any questions on the update? I do not have any.
No, I, I think the arterial is going well. There was an accident this weekend, I understand. That's what a citizen told me, they saw the Pennsylvania Northwest arterial, that new intersection, there was an accident.
But that one's not currently under construction, right? You said Pennsylvania?
No, it's not, it's, you know, they were like, oh, it's new, it's safer, it's improved, and they said it's under construction. I mean, how, but it flipped a car. So somebody wasn't at 35 miles an hour.
Most likely.
But so that's the first that I've heard of a problem. You know, the other side's obviously closed and traffic's moving well, I think, or appreciating it.
I think the city's pretty content on how it's been going actually fairly well with, you know, the reduced speed limit in there. And, uh, yeah, it's, it seems to be working well. So I think they're working with Pierce Tobin on getting, you know, full closures rather than open through traffic. I think that's helped expediting the process there a little bit, so.
Definitely gonna be congestion there.
Oh, yeah.
Tremendous with school beginning.
Absolutely, and I think they, that's the August 31st, they wanna try to get in there close to the school beginning as possible.
I went through the Penn one a couple times, and the traffic was pretty good. I mean, it was a little delay, but it wasn't that bad, I was surprised.
Yeah, as busy as it is, I was impressed too on how smooth it's actually going, so.
I did have one other topic. I had talked to Anthony about this at the end of the school year last year, and I forgot to get back with him. Had some citizens, a citizen concerned about Sageville School. Wondering if there could be a turn lane or something put in there somehow. And now with Highway Three being closed, there's a lot of traffic going up through there to avoid, you know, the Rickardsville construction. Way we could make that safer because in the mornings, I mean, traffic comes to a complete standstill on
Both sides there, yeah.
Gerald Road, because they're trying to get into the school lot, and somebody comes down that hill, semi comes down that hill, could end up with a major disasters. I don't know if, if there's any way we could figure out something to alleviate some of that, or.
So the contact probably, I've seen it myself, and the contact probably is somebody at the school district who's working on trying to move traffic through there to give you kind of a, a view of what they've tried. I don't know that we can put a turning lane because it would have to be huge. I mean, it, it's just a long jam right there of traffic. And the school parking lot, I don't know is big enough to get the buses off. So, so I think kind of a combining of factors, but a call over to somebody at the district who does transportation
Okay.
might be, you know, kind of a overview of what's going on.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
I had another issue from a citizen as well. This is about speed on Cycle Road. They wondered if we had another electric, you know, solar-based, your speed is, that really is effective over by Asbury's part of Cycle Road.
Okay.
And I wondered if that could be done at another location to kind of make people, apparently when traffic comes out during industrial exchange times by the West Campus, there's a lot of traffic moving quickly right there over to Old Highway Road.
Oh, so Old Highway to middle portion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, north or south? Both.
Probably.
You referring from Old Highway Road to New 20, or the 20, that section?
There's one, no, I'm talking about to Old Highway Road, so leaving Chevynell and coming on Cycle up, so that just backs up with traffic, but people will run that stop sign, and then they're moving quickly.
Okay, right before they get to
Question really is, do we even have those solars?
No, we don't have them on hand, no, we don't.
That's a good answer.
Yeah.
So maybe we just find out even how much something like that costs. I mean, there's probably hundreds of places in the county would want them if we were gonna do that.
I was gonna say, yeah, then we'll be putting a lot of them, and, and they're, they are, they're effective. Just be careful on where we put them, that way we're not on every street because I'm sure
Right.
we'll have concerns, but if it warrants it, especially with industrial center, I'm sure that'd be a good idea. But I'll look into a pricing and then follow up with you guys.
Then one other, we had talked a couple weeks ago, Boy Scout Road.
Yes, I, I do have a slight update on that, and maybe I should have incorporated it. So I, I did touch base with the state and asked them to re, make, because it is a state project, to review their detour trafficking. And, and they are gonna fix it, I think they had one missing sign. But, um, I'm also gonna try to touch base with them, and maybe we can relocate some signs that they're more effective with understanding, yes, this road's closed, please do not enter or bypass. So we're exploring those, and also touch base with the city of Dubuque. And we rented, or they did some traffic counts for us so we can identify, you know, how much of a burden this is. And if, if it's something that might warrant, you know, maybe a temporary embargo, because the citizen I talked to, or there's a couple of them, was the truck traffic, which was a little surprising, but the state GPS, if you can't go straight, then it's probably the closest way around. So we, we are looking into it, we don't have a definite answer on how to deter it. No matter how many signs you put up, no one, you know.
Understand that, but I was
It helps, but.
The other day, and you can see where it's starting to show the beating already.
Yeah, yeah, and then speeding and truck traffic is very concerning, and it's a, it's a sealed road, so we don't wanna see that either. It's, it's gonna hurt our road. So I'm working with the state to try to get a feasible solution in here, especially with this phase on Highway Three.
I just have another comment, maybe, something that came to mind over the weekend, Russell, but my first two years here on the board, any of the easements, so driveway easements, cuts, those kinds of things would come to us. Now that's handled, was, we were comfortable having Anthony and Tammy handle that.
Oh, the driveway permits?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
Yep.
Non-compliant ones.
Correct, they're not compliant, they wanted, they wanted
Not all of them.
Right, so the ones from, yeah, go ahead, the ones that don't meet site or spacing, right, Jay? Okay, yeah.
But those used to come to us, and then obviously with Anthony's many years of experience and Tammy as well, we weren't really doing anything other than kind of following the engineer's suggestion generally. I just wanted to draw that to your attention, if ever, if that's still, if you feel confident that that's the way it should continue to be, that you feel good about handling those, or is there a reason for some to come here based on your discretion or, or not?
Yeah, I, I plan on just continuing as it was. Anything that meets site and spacing distance and is appropriate with zoning, that we'll just sign off on it and approve of it, but something that doesn't mean, meet site or spacing distance that, you know, might cause a problem, definitely wanna bring you in, and I'll offer you my opinion, and maybe collectively we can agree or disagree, or however you wanna proceed. But that's the, the path forward, I see.
Well, I think maybe clarification, that's not the path that Anthony was working on. So Anthony also reviewed the ones that were non-compliant and made decisions.
Yep.
And he made that decision to do it that way, I don't think I've heard from a single citizen. When you bring us involved, you'll have citizens right here pleading the case and calling all three of us, which is fine to talk to them, but it's not really the best engineering approach or safety approach.
Right.
So I would recommend continuing same process, which means you don't bring those to us.
Right, okay.
That's my, my two cents, but.
So I think we are talking about the same thing. I wanted you to be aware that citizens did come here, and we did, we did hear from them about the issues and how they wanted to have the site be waived and so forth. I don't want you to feel like we just sign off on those, and it's just, it's, it's not pro-form, it's not just standard, right? So it isn't like they file for this and it's not compliant, and you just let them do it anyway. We are deferring about safety to the engineering department, and I just wanted to draw that to your attention. It isn't that we are expecting that you are reviewing that, and if it's a difficult case or you need an extra support, you can come to us, but I agree, citizens haven't expressed any disappointment, but I don't think it's understood that it's not an important conversation for the engineering department to be having. It's not just zoning signing off, zoning signing off, because that's what the, that's what the citizen wants. It really is your expertise and your view of safety that really controls that, okay?
Great.
So I do expect that you use independent judgment on those cases because we don't see them anymore.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't know if you wanted to be more involved, but yeah, if it, I, I'm very comfortable, and we reviewed it with Anthony through the last couple of weeks, so, yeah. And a lot of times we work, you contact them, and if we can shift or move something and work with the landowner, most likely that's the path we choose, so then you won't be involved.
We are always here, if you get a bad situation.
Right.
It can come to us to be reviewed as well. But it isn't this, it isn't the practice.
Right.
Andrew? Don't have anything further, thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Will you be around for the discussion about the action items, about the survey?
Yes.
If you have any questions on that, it's in the, it's in the packet. The SSA four A grant.
Save roads for all. Yeah, so this is a new grant, and you got the email attachment from Brian Moore with the DOT. And so this one, so there's a traffic safety plan, and it, about 57 counties have them, 42 do not. And then the ones that do have them are not up to par to satisfy this federal grant. So the state is going to basically submit on behalf of all the counties, and, and we had, they have concurrence with federal to do so. So basically, you agreeing to this helps start that process to get the safety plan updated to the qualifications of this, this grant. So this, this is basically step one, to get things going. Any other specific questions?
Uh, might be a detailed one, but since you asked, oh, I just found it, UEI, unique identity identifier.
We, we do
Identity identifier.
Right.
I was like, what the heck's a UEI? Okay, we're all good.
We, we do have one of those, and I have it. So once we get this signed and approved, I'll submit this resolution, signed resolution along with the UEI, and then we're good, and then we wait for step two of this process.
No costs, that's what it says.
No costs.
Pretty easy to agree to.
Yeah, it sounds like it's gonna save us, you know, anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000.
And we also have a hiring information here today. I don't see it listed on, I don't believe it was listed on our approved hires, but we have something about the, your replacement in the packet.
For the
Assistant engineer.
Yeah, the assistant, Russ's position.
Right, so I just wondered if, if, are we, I mean, that was posted, and we're ready to make a decision on that, aren't we?
Um, yeah, this is, would be the personnel requisition to post that.
All right, okay, okay, because we did Wyatt. We haven't approved that one yet, have we? Have we approved Wyatt?
Yeah, I believe it was
Last week?
Last week or two weeks ago? Two weeks ago.
So now we're doing your replacement?
Right.
Thank you.
You have two of them there, maintenance worker and assistant, right?
Yes, and I'm one, maintenance worker and then assistant, yep. Busy, everybody's leaving. Opportunity for new personnel, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
Want you to recess until 9:00 AM.
Russell, will you be here for this meeting? I do have a question about the assistant county engineer thing. Do you wanna, the board wanna take it now, or when we deal with the personnel requisitions?
You take it now.
Um, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me, and maybe I didn't read it close enough that says anything about either having your PE or working towards a PE or S L engineering? In the job description?
Job description.
As I mentioned before, I think that's important to have redundancy and to at least try to attract candidates.
Right.
Those qualifications or that interest that gives us, that gives us one more option to have a plan signed off on.
Okay, yeah, it, I mean, it does say preference will be given to a registered professional engineer.
I must have missed it.
Under special qual, or required special qualifications.
Required special preferences given to a professional and registered professional in the state or an engineer in training, okay.
Which, which that is, the engineer training is the individual that's working towards their PE.
It's, it's in there, okay. So, very deep, okay. But no, thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
That is all I have, sorry to make this go back.
There's nothing further, entertain a motion?
I will make that motion to recess sometime.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to recess until nine, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, we are in recess until nine, thank you, everyone. Meeting. We'll start the meeting with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Being no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom? Aye. We have no consent items, no procurement procedures, no public hearings, no plats for action items. We have resolution to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. I believe they were all Sunny Crest employees. They're actually filling some positions that have been vacant for quite a while. One dates all the way back to 2016, which is a good thing.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the petition. Participation in Safe Roads for all grant applications SS four A, which is just the federal grant for roadway improvements.
I'm good. We had a little work session on it early. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the participation in the SS four A grant application. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the certain fiscal year 2023 swap purchase service projects. Mr. Raver.
This is Ed Raver. In the packet is some identical information about the list of projects that you had sort of by consensus agreed that that you wanted me to bring forward a resolution. This is that same resolution. However, in your packet is an expl- explanation memo that goes along with it that explains how some of that background and history of how the the board has come to that decision where all of these will be treated in the same list in terms of the amount of funding from essentially ARPA lost revenue and how funds, how projects will be funded. Let's see, I want to make sure I'm getting this right here for the budget director back there that I'll be that these would be funded through county purchase of service funds that have replaced American Rescue Plan lost revenue funds. So they're separate from the $600,000 in purchase of service, but they'll still will still contract with them with a similar sort of contract. How did I do?
You did good.
I did okay.
For Monday.
She says I did okay.
Just like just like grade school, right, Ed?
So by electing on your lost revenue, $10 million lost revenue to use that for wages in our general basic fund, we are essentially creating a swap purchase of service program that is different than our regular purchase of service program. So we're we're referring to it as the swap. Those are terms that we use regularly. I'm sure you hear those a lot with the roads projects. We're swapping funds. We're swapping federal funds for our local funds. And so we'll contract things under our our own contracting as a purchase of service instead of under the federal contracting.
As a further note to that, as Stella mentioned, the contracting next week, we're hoping to bring forward what that contract will look like. And so we'll be asking you to to approve that. We've been circulating that internally and with our own auditors, not just the auditor's office, but with our auditors. So I think we're going to be hopefully in a position to 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 bring that forward so we can get started on that.
There will actually be three different contracts that looks there'll be two that look very similar. One will be the swap purchase of service. One will be the competitive purchase of service. So those are the two terms that we're using to delineate the two different programs to make sure that people understand that they are different programs. The swap was created by ARPA funds. The competitive purchase of service program is the program that the board approves on an annual basis, which was 600,000 this year. The third contract will be the actual ARPA contract, which is much more in depth and detailed.
Questions? Roughly, when do you feel or think you'd be into the contractual contracting stage, at least sending documents to recipients?
I'm hoping they're all under review right now. So as soon as reviews are done, we're ready to send them out. So in the next week or two, at best or at worst.
And which contracts will those be?
All of them are under review right now. So.
OS, ARPA, swap, POS, all three of them.
All three of them.
Good.
Wonderful.
Motion to approve the resolutions.
I will second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the fiscal year 2023 swap purchase of service projects. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have communications memo for department heads elected officials request for leave policies. Any questions on that?
Thought it was good to to hear some feedback directly from our county leaders. So I will make a motion to receive and file.
Second, also with comment. We have several areas where some of our personnel policies need to be refreshed and brought up to reflect both current legal expectation, but also types of policies and leave policies that make us an attractive employer. So when we get to our days when we're doing our search and our questioning for our HR administrator, these are things we want to be keeping in mind. So I appreciate that this will be something we can share in that interview packet.
I don't know that I'm in favor of it, but I don't know that it has to be a top priority as soon as we get someone hired because I think we have other issues that are a higher priority right now than that that we need to get resolved before this can get worked on. But I have no problem with getting the while moving on it. We have a motion in a second to receive and file. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have appointments, open vacancies for information only. To the personnel requisitions, first one is for the budget analyst. Did you want to give some context on that, Stella?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So in the budget process, we approved the new position for abundant budget analyst to be funded 50% through ARPA through the end of the ARPA period. So this person will be working heavily in the ARPA and contracting in the swap purchase of service arena. So we'll be bringing lots of contracts to you. There'll be a lot of monitoring and reporting back on that those contracts. So that's what this person will focus on initially.
Questions, Anne?
This is a permanent position, correct?
It is a permanent position. The funding, though, is not permanent. 50% of that funding does expire at the end of 2026, so December of 2026.
I was thinking along the same lines, I believe, if I can comply with the question, would be be better off listing as the job describer, not the job, the job description lists ARPA, which is good. But then on the actual personnel requisition form, if you can bring that up there, the status is permanent full time. Would you consider putting that as a temporary check and then the duration of the temporary assignment would be during ARPA funding?
Sure.
Which would expire in 2026, I believe.
Yes, December of 2026. So I'm.
Thoughts on that?
I'm not opposed to it. I think it will be slightly harder to recruit under a temporary assignment. It is several years, so it's not, you know, six months or something like that. But I think it might make it harder to find a person to fill this position.
Maybe right on that, or you may find somebody that's just ready to sunset their retirement and you're just looking for another three or four years. And they can honestly say, I'm looking for three or four years. But I would feel better if we had the temporary box checked.
Okay.
So future boards would understand that the intent of this board, in my opinion, was that this position is dependent upon ARPA funding.
Okay.
They can certainly make the decision when they need to related to the status of the position past ARPA funding. But that that's my two cents.
I could see your point on it. It'd be hard to recruit looking for a full time job. They want security, not oh, he might be out the door in a few years. And then when we discussed that we had said there were there was a need to expand department as Stella was kind of the only one there trying to get all this completed. But I can go either way on it. I'm not I'd agree with Jay too, that you may be able to find somebody that just wants some for a couple of years, three years, but.
I'm talking to the budget director who led us through the budget process. I believe I voted no on this as a person as a position because it was a permanent position, right? So I don't understand if so I'm asking you as the budget director about this position. Did we budget it at? Did we budget this as a permanent full time position?
So we don't budget out that far. So we're not budgeting out until, you know, into 2027. We attached it to ARPA, so 50% is to ARPA. My preference, my number one preference would be to be permanent full time. But if the board would like to attach temporary to it, I can certainly come back in 2026 and either say, yes, I still need this position or no, we should let it expire.
We did not budget it as a full time permanent person.
We budgeted it as a full time position. We just don't budget out that many years. So.
Well.
Yes and no.
What's going to be the answer to the engineer's question? Is key applying is is the application for our our assistant engineer? Is that a permanent full time position?
That would be a question for him.
Right.
Once we once we put people on the payroll, unless they're designated as like a a temporary position, they don't necessarily roll back out in a in a budget.
Every every employee is an employee at will and by state code, we only budget on a 12 months annual basis. So that's how it works. So that's very similar to teachers as well. They have 12 month contracts. That's, you know, I think there's there's implied that there's consistency in government and you want consistent employees to provide consistent services. But the the reality is the employees have to be a county employee at will and are subject to budgeting each and every year. And thankfully, we've done a, I think, a really good job of maintaining the service levels and the employee levels. But this would just signal all this would do and it wouldn't change any of the dollar amounts. You're you're fully planning to take the allocation of the salary and benefits into ARPA, right?
Yes.
So it's not going to change anything other than signaling, as I mentioned, to pre future boards that the intent of this board, I mean, is that this would be a temporary position, subject to ARPA funding. And then, you know, the future boards resolve that employee issue in 2026.
Anything further?
Well, just it's we are spending ARPA money on salaries. That's what we're doing.
Yes.
Told the health board, we don't do that, but we are doing that. And that's fine. And that's that's not on the agenda for today. But I just think that's noteworthy that we are spending ARPA money on salaries. So.
And we previously discussed this many months ago and agreed to that. So yes, related to the expenditure of ARPA funds, we need people to manage those expenditures.
Yeah, it's I look at it as the administration of the program.
So thoughts related to are we done with discussion? Otherwise, I'll I'll make a motion if we are. I'll make a motion to table this personnel requisition for further review related to applying a temporary status for this personnel requisition that would co terminate with ARPA funds.
Basically, just bring it back as a temporary.
That would be my motion to bring it back as a temporary employee and the temporary assignment would be ARPA designation.
I don't actually need this to come back as a temporary. There's a lot of need in budget to do things that I would like to do that make budget much more transparent. Those documents that we've talked about over my term about what's all missing from our budget department. So I don't need this. There'd be plenty of work for a person to do. ARPA will be where they begin with.
Yeah, I guess.
Is there a second to my motion? So.
I I think I agree with Dan that I do believe there is enough work for a permanent full time position. And we are paying it to 26 for the ARPA because that's a lot of what that person will be doing. But I think further into the future, we also need another person budget department because it is getting pretty stretched. That would be.
Sounds like my motion dies. Okay, so we're back at some discussion. So you know, it is only one position, but I've mentioned this before. I mean, adding full time employees on a permanent basis, I would look two or three times that. Our largest cost, you can verify this, budget director, is in wages and salaries.
That's correct.
If you look at the largest percentage of increase in costs, those have been in wages and salaries, some all the way up to 15%. Vision made, not one I supported. I just would be hesitant to looking at adding long term permanent full time employees. It just puts more pressure on future boards to, one, make sure those people are gainfully employed and two, that the levy can support them. And looking out for years or so gets a little harder to say what will economic conditions be, property tax assessments. and our current costs. So it's just a more measure of caution I would have related to the budget process. Doesn't change into dollars. We're going to use ARPA funds. But in 2026, this will hit general basic if we don't change anything.
So fifty percent will already hit general basic, but the additional fifty percent will.
But it was, okay, I must have missed something. So fifty fifty?
Yeah, so that was what was approved during the budget process, that fifty percent of the funding would come from ARPA.
Okay. I would go to a hundred percent. So I'm definitely against it now.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think just, I think we should use ARPA funds for this. The reason, in my main point, that the position is needed is because of the extra workload in, in ARPA. So.
We, we should have a conversation about the administration of ARPA and how we're setting aside funding for that as we have our ARPA, you know, the Biden emergency funds continue to be awarded and, you know, designated. I don't think we've got a number in this where we're saying that's what the county is going to hold for administration. But I would like to see that. I think that's a wise thing to do, to say that that's some we're not going to touch, that's going to be used for administration. As to Supervisor Wickham's comments about caution, I understand and share those concerns. But some, we don't make widgets. We don't make things. We provide essential services to county residents. And that requires people in this role is going to aid in the transparency to let people know how their tax dollars are going to be spent. And I think that is a piece we're missing right now on our website, in our financial documents, not easy to find, even for people who are employed here, not easy to locate. So I, I do think there's lots of work to show people report back how we spend their money. And that's why I think this position gives us the opportunity to do.
To be clear, I fully support the position. I just support it as temporary in ARPA funding. Because it's designated to that. And so what that would do is force a future board to make a decision, do we want this position when things are normal? And I think that's, that's a good decision versus, a good decision because we have the option. We normally don't have those options. It's, this position would just come out of general basic, or if it was out of IT, it comes out of general basic, or the sheriff's department. It comes out of, you know, general basic, short of federal grants, which we just got. And so to not use it and that, to find this temporary, I don't see any reason why you would choose to make it permanent. I mean, you're looking, you're looking into our workload four years from now and saying, and our budget and saying, yeah, let's, let's add a full-time permanent position. You don't need to make that decision. So anyway, that, that's my two cents. That's where I'm at.
I would say the board certainly has the opportunity to use ARPA funding 100% for this. There is funding available. So if you would like to designate 100% of the position to be ARPA, that's something the board can choose to do.
That gets squishy with our budget loss, but, you know, it's really more of just signaling the temporary pieces. My biggest piece.
You anticipate bringing forward some kind of an administration request in the ARPA, so we can see it in the budget?
I'm not sure exactly, like a number or like a administrative.
Line item in ARPA that says ARPA administration allocating X amount of money, whatever that is, $300,000, half a million. I have no idea.
Yeah, I think we're probably at least 250, 250,000 for administration. I talked to Megan about the single audit fees, which I believe we should set aside. And also I had planned for 50% of this position.
That, that was my assumption, that your, your wage rate up there would be applied. And so you just multiply that times four years.
So I calculated out, it was about 250,000.
A hundred percent funded by ARPA?
Well, that is
Hard to say.
Door to decide.
I mean, at this point, I would move to table until we come back with some kind of an administration number of what it's going to take us to do administration, including this staff personnel, the audit fees, the other things you're informing us of. I'd like to see that number.
Oh, I'll second the motion to table. Question? Um, what is the board's thought on the temporary versus permanent full-time check? Stella knows what we're trying to accomplish. It's permanent full-time right now.
Right, it's going to have to go to temporary if we're going to fund it with ARPA. I mean, there's no question about that.
Why is that? Is that necessary under the regulations that it being listed as a, I understand the funding ends, but is that a requirement that we list a person as temporary?
No, I wouldn't say it's a funding requirement.
Terminal box that signifies to future boards and a decision that this board made that this is a temporary position because we receive federal funds. It's not a long-term cost to the county.
It could be made a full-time position at the end of the ARPA.
Whoever gets to make that decision for you, yes.
That'd be somewhere in the job description, more accurately, in an opening paragraph, that the purpose of this position is for this purpose. It will be paid. I mean, let's, let's put something out there to.
Well, only if you agree to temporary, because otherwise if it's permanent, then if it's a permanent position, ARPA will go away.
You've explained that everybody is temporary because we only budget for one year. So we, we got to find our common terms here to describe this.
It's on the list, it's right up there. I'm not being argumentative, but one of those boxes needs to be checked according to our form. I'm proposing temporary. I just curious to what you two would propose. If it's permanent full-time, fine. I just, I'm clear, well, I want the temporary box checked.
I understand that, and I continue to ask the budget director what was budgeted, and I'm not absolutely clear what the answer to that question is. We made this decision back in January.
I don't know, and I don't recall, and maybe you do, if we said temporary or permanent, we've talked about funding. In my recollection of 50% would be tied to the funding of ARPA, which does expire in 2026.
Under those guidelines, I would assume that we were referring to a permanent position because at the end of the four years that we pick up the other 50%. Would be my take on that. I also understand, Evan.
My vantage point, we have the decision in front of us. So you've, you've heard my preference. But, you know, the table motion is still, still there. I just think staff and budget director would probably prefer to know what the board wants, so we don't have to do this another week from now.
If it's going to, if it matters that greatly that it's temporary, that's going to impact whether or not who the person is who applies. That's a significant difference in terms of recruitment. We are not having robust results at the county right now necessarily with recruiting all of our positions. But if that's what it takes to move this forward, that it's temporary, we'll just bring it back again, and we'll just make a person temporary until they're retired, I suppose. But it will impact who applies for the job.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that.
So.
I think it's, it's.
That we want to do, send it out on a temporary with this caveat at the top about how it's funded on the job description by ARPA?
When you act like that's terrible, that happens all the time.
I'm not saying it's terrible, Jay.
Okay.
Saying we want to get them, we, I think we need to get to our staff, whatever message, so they can go try to find people to do the job. And the clock on this is running. There is a need to get this person here.
And.
I don't want to fight over temporary, permanent, if it doesn't matter in terms of how we're going to allocate our annual budget.
I think for budgeting, it isn't significant because we have a $10 million loss wiggle room that hits our general basic, right? So it's pretty N million is fluid between those two buckets. It's more, you've heard what I said related to temporary. I won't repeat myself. It's, I'm, and I I'm on my point. I'm not moving. What do you want to do?
We have a motion and a second.
Table, but what is, what box should Stella have checked? You've heard my, you've heard my two cents. If we get consensus, we can make a decision.
I'm, I'm comfortable with leaving it as a permanent full-time because I think that's the only way we're going to get a quality candidate. Right now, the job market is tough, so we have to, we have to give people some security and knowing that if I take this job, I have some security, no matter where the funding's coming from for ARPA for four years, and then it's going to be on us. But we have to give people some sense of security in a job place. And so you have a motion and a second to table and bring it back because, I guess, you want to leave it as the 50% ARPA or 100% ARPA for the.
I, I would be at 100% ARPA, but it's analytics related to temporary, but.
I would ask the budget director, what is the preferred, I mean, it, it, you're, Stella, it's you, it's on you. Let's this, make some decisions with you about what this should be. It's permanent, should be funded by ARPA. What else do you need us to say?
I think the decision of what percentage you would like to fund with ARPA, I will make sure that is recorded.
100% ARPA?
I'm comfortable with that. So I, I think we're both, I think we're good now. Ready for the vote.
Motion and a second to table. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Good discussion. Thank you.
Discussion for the wrangling.
Next, we have motion to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent full-time assistant county engineer, and that would be replacing Russell's position, who has moved to the
on the attorney.
So during the break, Russell and I were just awkwardly, probably on my end anyways, talking about the salary that's listed and whether or not that is sufficient to get a engineer with the PE, the professional engineering designation, if this wage is high enough. So at that, I don't know if, if Russell, if you want us to table for you to have opportunity to do more exploration of this, or if we're ready to move forward. I'm asking you to go to the podium and give me your idea of whether we want to move.
Well, Russell, whoever the county engineer, um, yes, we, we've talked briefly about this salary-wise. I, I did do a little homework with the and, and the comparables of the relative counties. But I just want to let you know there are private consultants out there, many of them in Debut County, so I'm just not familiar with the wage of the private sector. Be happy to look into that. And maybe we can adjust accordingly, just so it's fair and we do get a good quality candidate, because I agree. We, we definitely need a top quality candidate.
This is something that normally Don Sherman would do for us. He would get a personnel requisition with job description, and then she would have done the research. Our HR administrator would have walked through the county steps to do budget analysis, excuse me, pay analysis. So I mean, I guess that's why we, we just don't know if this is the right wage.
And so we want a table until we can get some more information on that, or do you want to move forward?
I'd be happy to look into it. We could table it for another week and come back with an, an adjustment. I could send you information if you guys want to beforehand or, and discuss it. I, I think it's, it's close, but I think it's just county, and that's all I researched was county. It would be slightly higher from what we're compared.
County.
County, comparable counties.
Comparable counties. So you have done some research.
I have done some research just on the county level, not the private, so I can't speak of the private sector.
That'd be good enough for me. At this point, we have had latitude to accelerate or start at different wage levels, the steps.
Right.
So that gives us some latitude if you felt you had a candidate that you need to increase those wages for. So if you've, if you've done that preliminary county research, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I am too. I mean, we know that we're relatively close, so and if it has to be moved a little bit, we can, we can always move it.
Yeah. I, I have not adjusted it, but the county comparables was slightly higher than what you're seeing here. I'd be happy to change it on the county level, but it would be nice to compare private, to be honest with you. So if you want to table it for another week, or if you're, I'm comfortable either way. But I do agree, I think if we get this right, we do it one time, we get a good quality candidate, and the rest is history.
Motion to table for one week.
I will second. Have motion and a second to table for a week. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Big areas. Next, we have the, thanks, Russ. Motion to approve the personnel requisition for permanent full-time maintenance worker, and that's also with Rhodes Department.
Union position?
Russell, this a union position?
Okay, a little easier on the wage then, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is a, a union position, just replacing an M1 that bumped up to an M2, so it's the vacant position of the M1 position. That was recently.
To approve.
I will second.
Have motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent full-time maintenance worker one. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Go to the public comment section. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person, which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and I will code prohibit the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Do we have anyone on Zoom, Roseanne? Okay, we'll move to our work sessions.
One chat down there.
Pardon?
Asking her on the one chat, just curious to. Okay. Okay.
A work session with the IT director to present middle mile updates.
Good morning, supervisors. Nathan Gilmore, IT Director, Debut County. Uh, I think it would be worthwhile to do a very brief recap of how we got here. So ARPA passed, was signed into law by President Biden, March 11th, 2021. I spent April and May talking to each of you individually about what this means. What does promotion of broadband mean from the ARPA definition, and what could we do to help facilitate that? Spent the summer narrowing those options down and formally settled on the concept of middle mile. I made the written proposal August of 21. Then in January of 22, did the full presentation in this boardroom, concepts, budget numbers, the whole, whole dog and pony show. Did a similar cut-down version, May of 22, with the county engineer to further move it along. At that work session, I had asks, may I go talk to stakeholders? May I try to answer the demand questions? And a study, et cetera. So I am back here to do updates on those and see what the consensus is for next steps. I believe I have answered the demand question. We have three fiber-to-the-home providers deploying in the county. Three out of three have sent letters of support that they agree with the middle mile concept. And they would be interested in partnering with the county in some fashion. We also have a fourth stakeholder who is not necessarily doing fiber to the home yet, but they are leasing fiber where it makes sense for businesses and. but they are leasing fiber where it makes sense for businesses and schools. They're not using the term dark fiber, but that's what they're doing, they also are interested in partnering with us. So from a demand question, we have stakeholders that are interested in this concept, exploring it further with the county. I also asked if we could do a study, and I have returned with a budget number for that. I'm not saying we would use ECIA, I'm saying that's the budget number that we have, and we would need to follow whatever ARPA bid guidelines we'd have to do to pick the person doing the study, but GDDC would manage it, and we would pay someone to help us gather this data. Regardless of what happens with middle mile, I think that study has value to help map out strategic vision and plans over the next three, four, five, six, seven years. I think picking a concept is premature, I think the next logical step is to see if there is consensus, does the board want to do something with middle mile, yes or no? And if yes, what is a consensus on an allocation? We can talk concepts, I can talk concepts all day, I'm, I'm good. I think it may be a little premature, but if the board wants to say yes to the first question, and then give a direction to focus on a particular concept, awesome. My recommendation would be yes, no, and then if yes, what is an allocation number that the board is comfortable with? I can then go back to the stakeholders and start saying, okay, what makes the most sense to maximize the dollars that everybody brings to the table to help the most promotion of broadband? Fiber to the home, anchor institutions, so forth. Uh, if the answer's no, I still feel this study has value for strategic planning and building things over the next couple of years, and if it's no and no, thank you for your time, and it's been an amazing eighteen months to get us here.
Oh, is your six hundred thousand is for the engineering?
So I have several samples, and these are just budget samples to have a conversation so you know what is achievable. For six hundred K, that should pay for professional engineering of all twenty-six miles of the Heritage Trail. That would then give us engineering documents to do however much we want to do per year. Maybe we want to.
I think we had conversation earlier on that we were going, wanted to stay away from the Heritage Trail and go Old Highway, I thought.
So at the May meeting, Anthony and I, Anthony and now Russell, is doing Old Highway. Once-in-a-generation repaving. So yes, that was the May meeting, those, these are both concepts. In a perfect world, we would do both, probably not going to do both, Heritage Trail is an ideal section, because nobody digs on it, there's almost no chance of it ever being cut or disrupted, and it has other ROI value to the county and to citizens, nature cameras, security cameras, wifi, that would all be possible if we built out the trail. Old Highway is also an option, like, we can, it's going to be tight, but we could still do it, and we have a partner who wants to do from F Worth to Dyersville along that path, some along Old Highway, some along the trail. So I said, I can talk concepts all day. But in my opinion, we need to say, we need to say yes, no, do we want to do something with middle mile, yes, no? And then what is an allocation number that the board is comfortable with? Because that number's going to dictate what we can do, like, we can't do all of this, we may only be able to do a teeny tiny portion of it. I'm open to all of it. I am obviously a believer in this concept, I know it has value and return to citizens and to the county. What we do, we can decide that right here, right now, that's fine, I think it's premature, but really, yes, no, and what's a number that's comfortable? Because that will dictate my next steps for what we are looking to build.
I guess I am, I need more information on how many people actually need this, I know we have fiber in Farley, we have in F Worth and Piastah. So what are we gaining, you know, we have fiber there already by these outside companies, yes, what are we gaining by doing this?
We gain resiliency for the partners, they will then have additional fiber runs to back up their networks. Generally speaking, you don't want one run, if you have one run, it gets cut, you're talking an outage until you can repair it. This gives them a separate path, and they're going to design their networks, they're going to do what they need to do. This gives them another option to make their networks more redundant, we're not talking fiber-to-the-home with this, we're talking the longer runs, the middle mile. We, the county, get to reduce our long-term costs over the next fifty years as we continue to have our assets online. We also can do security cameras, we can do traffic cameras, public wifi, it opens us up to further promote services for the citizens.
You've always been very organized, thorough, and I'll have to add patience to that list too now, since, you know, I think ARPA came out, you know, one of the, the leads on ARPA was, was fiber, and you've been doing a great job educating us and advising and getting out from the community. I have kind of a list of my four things that I'm just looking for, and I'm, I'm just not there yet, but I'll, I'll hit them, is, you know, what is that near-term and/or short-term demand right now from both citizens and business? I haven't heard it screamed loudly. Right next to that is, okay, and you predict the future, and that demand will accelerate rapidly, and so what is the, the future, let's say four to ten years out? And then if we do budget and we do actually expend funds, can we make it active and live? So, you know, I voted against the allocation of infrastructure funding on the Southwest Strateo, still sitting there, no benefit, small dollar amount, but no benefit, I'd hate to repeat that. And then maybe quantifying our internal cost savings would be the last thing, and while we might be able to, well, those are, those are my, my four issues that I'm, that I'm really looking for, and I, I just don't, I can't check them, I can't check those four boxes right now, and I've had some good study and good conversation, and so it's coming up short for me right now to pull the trigger any funding.
Been a supporter and advocate. People that I talk to have internet and they don't see a problem, works great for them. I haven't talked to anybody who doesn't have it, I've talked to people who have friends or family who've struggled, I hear the anecdotal evidence that there's trouble in the county, certainly our school district, West Dubuque had trouble, has trouble with that. I think middle mile is project we should be supporting. I'm not making another motion on this without a second, and I don't see it. So, I mean, I value all that you've done, you've, ECIA's letter carries great weight with me that the county could be a partner, people are thanking us for considering being partners, there's need for a master plan, need for gap analysis to build out what we know about our own infrastructure, because we don't know, we don't know, but we have professional people here asking us to find out our knowledge, and I include Nathan Yu as one of those professional people saying we need to determine how, how we can be helpful on broadband, so. This is not my area of expertise, I've attempted to learn it, and you've been helpful, Nathan, and project in some capacity has merit.
I would agree that, I mean, there is some merit to it, but I just don't have enough information at this time to pull the trigger on that kind of money. I, I guess I, I don't understand enough of it, when I see that we have fiber in all these other towns, I guess I get your redundancy and stuff, but I don't know where the return comes on our investment.
It drives competition as well, if we are there with middle mile, right? Because now somebody who's paying whatever their monthly bill is in Farley or in the unincorporated areas, we're working toward creating a field where other players can exist, that has happened here in the city of Dubuque, there are many, many providers here, which is why we have letters from three as compared to just one.
But I would, I guess you talked the Heritage Trail, it's county property, okay. Get with these providers and say, hey, we're going to let you bury fiber along our property, we just want a line. It's on them, we don't do anything except we get a line for it.
Are you saying you would require them to give us fiber or conduit in exchange for us approving the permit? Because now we're talking a dig-on policy.
On our property.
That is not how we do permits currently, currently, we do not have a dig-on's policy. If we want to explore a dig-on's policy, then absolutely, I'm all there, I've been many, many years pushing this, but what you're promote, what you're proposing.
They talked about doing that along Old Highway when we redo it, that they could, we'd want to run line then when they redo the Old Highway.
So they're not going to give us a line, like, without some sort of policy or financial remuneration, if there's a, what you're proposing, or what I feel you're proposing, is some sort of dig-on's requirement that in order to approve your permit, you have to allow us to use a piece of your conduit or a piece of your fiber, which is not anything that the county has expressed interest in going down, I've proposed it in the past, and there's even an ARPA proposal about dig-on's. So yes, I'm all there, if you want to, I will hundred percent, hand in hand, help us develop a policy like that, but nothing exists like that today. And we don't have any carrots or sticks that would allow us to encourage that, like, as long as they meet the requirements for a permit, they're going to get the permit.
But if they want to go along the Heritage Trail, we'd have to approve that.
There's more steps for the trail, there's more hoops, but we, we don't have, we can't tell them no, we as the county can't tell them no, now maybe the hair conservation has stronger sticks and carrots.
Heritage Trail's a few more steps, one, we technically do not own the trail right away, it's a, it's a federal easement, so, but, but long story short, I'm sure if a private developer came and applied pressure and interest and there's public good, we'd probably figure it out, that'd be my, my guess.
Yeah, we're not going to.
Obviously, right away within, you know, within the county and the state, that happens all the time, private utility has access to those.
Yes, yeah, we would not stop progress, I don't want to infer that, but to tell a private sector company, you give us something while you're doing something else, we don't have the tools in place to do that. I'm a hundred percent interested in doing a dig-on's policy or some sort, whatever you want to call it, dig-on's the actual name, but different entities call it different things. I'm on board, but we don't have anything in place like that today, and we're not going to be able to build that once the permit hits our desk, once the permit hits our desk, we can't delay that six months while we figure this out and come up with a system like, that's not fair to the person doing the permit. So if there is interest in that, I've five, six years of budgets on dig-on stuff that I can get you rather quickly.
Well, you had something on your ARP request for that dig-on's policy. I want to say it was like over a million dollars.
The intention of that is we'll need funding to help us develop the policy, augment County Attorney May from whatever legal perspective he would need to help us write it, and then the intention is to fund in the future stuff with roads, so when they're doing roads projects, we can put conduit in that others can then lease, or when a private sector is doing a permit, we have conduit on hand and at the ready that they can pull with us, like, they have the permit, they've got ten miles, okay, we're not going to slow down your project, because that's, that's the thing, we can't slow them down, we have to be ready, we have to have our materials in a backlot somewhere, or, and we have to have our agreements in place, we can't make this up after the request has hit us, this has to all be done ahead of time, and when they're doing their trenching and doing their boring, where there is a benefit, not a hindrance.
I have you focus on this letter that's up on the screen right now. This talks about the county not being prepared to be able to participate in any possible grant funding, and we're living in a time when there's billions of dollars available
Yep.
to accelerate this kind of technology in counties all across our country, right? And we are not in a position to even begin to scratch a grant on this, to get us to that point, Kelly Deitmeyer was one of our main partners, first she writes in support of the request for countywide broadband master plan and gap analysis, is that what you're describing in your budget examples, or is there some other number that would be part of a broadband master plan and gap analysis?
I would propose that after we get, if this is approved, if the study's approved, and we get this data set, this artifact, that is the initial step, now we actually know what's where, what buildings are going to be challenges to get into, we can begin developing what's next, so there would be stuff after that, I wouldn't say it would be a lot of financial costs, a lot of that's internal and external analyzing it, but this study is very important, in my opinion, to go after future grants with any hope of actually scoring enough to get anything, but also just to make better decisions down the road, this will help our private sectors too, this will help us with our own internal, with our, you know, our cities, we don't know what we don't know.
What's the cost to this?
Uh, the fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars?
Yes. Approximately six months, give or take, to complete the work, and we would have a deliverable similar to the example that I gave, I pulled one page out of the deliverable as an example, and what that means then is that we will then know all these anchor institutions, all these locations, A, identify them in a meaningful way, where they are, and how do we get into them, because that's the other piece, some locations, it could be two thousand dollars. it could be two thousand dollars. You can get into the building, handhold conduit, you're good, go, great. Other locations could be fifteen thousand dollars. We don't know that. And as you're planning, you need to budget that sort of penetration into those facilities. And that's part of what this is. Boots on the ground, figuring out what these locations look like, how to get into them. How far are they from, you know, other institutions, et cetera?
Study would do this across the county. So where the example is mainly focused in Dubuque because probably Dubuque did that study.
Yes.
This would focus at all the targets or needs throughout the county. So most like an NICC hospital in Dyersville, so on and so forth.
Anything that could remotely be con thought, considered as an anchor institution would be included in this study.
Certainly all of our infrastructure assets.
All of our assets within the smaller cities, their assets. This is, this is everything. We, we don't need to do city Dubuque because they've just finished it a few weeks ago. But anything outside that within our borders, this would be included in this.
So that's, that's a tiny essential step. Now it comes at a fifty thousand dollar price tag. I, I get that. We're living in a world with big numbers. And so those seem like easy, right? Fifty thousand dollars. That's still a tremendous amount of money. Um, but that to me seems like that's a necessity to learn that information, to do future planning from. Are there other pieces similar that are on the horizon that have that kind of a price tag? Next, is there a next step to that's short of six hundred thousand dollars, which is your, one of your budget items?
I would, I say yes. My hesitation is do we want, does the board want to go down this path in an intentional strategic way? And I, and I say that because there's only so much energy and blood in my body and how much more I want to devote to this before it's time to step back and move on to other ARPA proposals that hopefully will get a shot at this board. So yes, this is an essential first step. Like we, we, we don't know what we don't know. And I think this will pay dividends for future conversations. Even if we don't do anything with middle mile and this is it is, this then I can come back with maps and be more specific at budget time saying, okay, well, we need to put a mile in here because of X, Y, Z. And we've got four partners are gonna help with that. We can't do that yet. I mean, you, I'm hearing you want specifics. I'm as specific as I can right now, given where we're at with strategic planning and vision for fiber and conduit middle mile throughout the county. So I strongly encourage the board to move forward with the study. I would also encourage middle mile, but you know, I can read the room, so.
I, I'd be open to the study. I would like to see, did you say Dubuque just completed theirs?
There is a sample in your packet of what they delivered. Should be paced to this.
The whole, yeah, I've seen.
I would need, I will ask for permission. I, I, it isn't public to the city council yet, but I can ask.
Fresh. Yeah, I, I would just like to, to review it and see what those, uh, deliverables would be. Um, and then my big piece would be is if we went through a study, do we believe that that would hopefully allow us to score better on some additional federal grants? That'd be my intent.
Yeah, the federal grants.
Do it ourselves, it's gonna be hard.
The federal grants are a, a big lift. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. They are.
Thinking a study like this wouldn't.
It is one, it is one piece.
One piece.
One piece.
Yeah, the, so I mean, one of the things just, it's just a fact. So we've got twenty million and none of it's gone to broadband, basically. So and there's not a significant amount related to broadband infrastructure. So that means the rest of it's gonna be on the county. And if there's no, if you feel or think we're not gonna get any federal funds, much more difficult with our existing needs because this would be general basic dollars, which
Yep.
beat against all the other general basic functions. And compete against roads, generally they're separate. So this wouldn't be an enlightening conversation as well to support that. So I mean, I'm glad you were by on us being, you know, if we do a study, that's one out of fifty things that you need. And if that's the case, um, I think the board has made our decisions and, and really the community made the decisions. I mean, you, you offered up good solutions, good ideas, but the community did as well. And we've said yes to those forty seven already. So the, you know, the, the big bulk of the, the funding is gone. And if there's not a real good hope for additional federal funding, I think then these initiatives will be on hold. That's kind of my assessment where we're at.
I make a point never to overpromise. I can tell you that success builds success. And grant approvers like to grow, not build new. So if we got started, did the study, got engineering, got some partnerships, built something, maybe it's five miles, maybe go, uh, build something. We have in place partnerships. We will then be able to score better on grants because we are asking them to help us grow our existing success. Not, we just want money to build something new. They know we have skin in the game. They know we have put the blood, sweat and tears on and that the odds of success increase. They know giving us money is a safe bet.
I'm open to that. And so we, we met with a vendor that was doing that specifically in Wisconsin. And so, yeah, that makes sense. Uh, have a private entity that wants to be a component or the lead. Have the county support it and try to bring down funds. So I'm open to that concept. Um, what I'm hearing you say is that this study's not gonna be the lead. And so but I'm open to those private concepts and I absolutely agree with you that, you know, momentum and, and things that have been done will help. They're good proof points to, uh, the federal government that this is a priority for us locally. And I think if we look at our private vendors, I think we could promote and sell that. But we probably need to partner with them in order to, to get a piece of it.
We need to bring something to the table. And rightly so, in my opinion, because they're gonna do what they're gonna do, what they need to do.
I think if we went to those private providers and said, hey, we'd like to partner with you on some federal grants. I think they'd all go, sure, as long as I don't have to do a lot of work and pay for it all.
Yeah, they're, they're on board with us partnering in that context.
Yeah.
But giving them a letter of support is.
No, 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 not a letter of support, but actually an application. We've heard some of the vendors, I don't need to out them in public here because that, that, that's happening right now with other counties.
Yes.
And so that might be a route that I'm recommending. If a private vendor can do it with another county, let's see if they'll do it with Dubuque County with where we, where we feel we have needs. That might be the starting point. I'm just, you know, from the discussion, it's been good and this gets to be, you know, I haven't spoken with you in, in a month or so and, uh, hope, hope family and everybody's doing good in St. Louis and
Everyone's good.
The heavy rain and stuff, but, uh, so it, it just seems like this, the, the timing for this related to the funds that we have available um, and related to the emerging private providers and the demand side is all just, everything's just too fluid for me to say, let's cut funds for this. I just have difficulty seeing that clear return on investment. That, that's where I'm at today, Ford.
I don't want to miss out on opportunities. I'm not prepared today to say that Dubuque County is not going to be engaged in infrastructure building for broadband that doesn't give us an access to a grant application on behalf of our citizens to take advantage of this unprecedented federal money, right? We have to be in the game on this. Where we're headed, we don't know. But if a master plan is essential to begin the next conversation, then we should be underway with this. No one hired me to say no to something that people believe is important. I don't saying this board isn't, is saying it's not important. But we have to get started because we're not going to know if we need to invest major money or we're missing out on opportunities. At some point, I'd like to have enough information to know that opportunities are going by and we're just not prepared or we're flat footed. Um, we need, I think as leaders, we need to be directing you to begin this process. So I would like to see us move forward with a master plan and gap analysis. To me, that seems that that's a, we're, we're expecting that money to be gone, but there's nothing. Our, our money is being spent. We're allocating away. Yes, we're, we're getting all that done. But I don't know that there's not gonna be other opportunities at the federal level or even the state level at some time. So strikes me, we should probably know what our assets are. That's a fifty thousand dollars and that's what you need, Nathan? Or do you need time to bring something back firm or where are we?
No, that's a good number. Um, I would come back with an actual resolution to make it official for ARPA. I don't, this isn't a consensus request. Should I come back with the formal paperwork to allocate fifty thousand from wherever you want to take it? I assume ARPA, but wherever you want to take it. Um, and then I can work with Ed and Stella and Kevin on how we go about hiring and vetting a vendor to do this. Whether it's ECIA or somebody else is beside this conversation, so.
I would, uh, be in favor of forward with the study. Get the information we need. At least we'd have something to start with. I agree with Jay that don't necessarily see a stumping millions of dollars into this on a general basic until we have information, but it's a starting point and we can work towards federal grants, whatever.
It is a starting point and thank you. I, we gotta start somewhere and this is a starting point. I'm to us, take the consensus then that middle mile we can move on from. Is that a correct assessment? But we could, I can stop on middle mile. Like that's the consensus.
Continue working for partnerships, you know?
Well, I will always continue to work on partnerships, but this is specific to ARPA funds with middle mile.
Right. Uh, I'm thinking you can probably stop on that. And there's not enough funding left to complete a lot.
Well, if you want to allocate some funding, I will absolutely squeeze every foot out of every dollar. Don't let that stop you.
There's other requests that we have to consider, yet also.
I had to try, so.
I'm, I'm comfortable moving off of middle mile and that, those discussions. I, I would like to have the report that was completed or the example, if you can send that full one.
I will.
Just so I can review and see what the deliverables are.
Absolutely.
And I'm always. Does good work, but you know, a lot of reports have just said.
I am interested in, in connecting that West Campus to, um, the funding that we put along the Southwest arterial.
Yeah.
Did make progress with the city.
Yep.
To be forward thinking there. And I, I think that that's probably a, not a big, not a, that's not a big piece. But when, when the board, the consensus of the board is to not move forward on middle mile, to me, that doesn't mean that you shouldn't still look for strategic opportunities. Because if that's how we're gonna build out the county, then let's just continue to look for that.
I hundred percent agree and thank you. Yeah, I will have, I have several things coming outside of ARPA for agreements for fiber. And that's here. It's coming now that this is put to bed, so to speak. I will move on to those.
And we're at August first, so it's budget time.
It is.
In my mind, it's budget time. I know that we don't begin budget until after the first of year, but, um, proactive counties do begin budgeting at this time. So it's, it's time to start looking at what we need to put into next year's budget.
Your IT director starts budgets in September, so.
Great.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
Motion, motion to recess for five minutes, please.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to recess for five minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are in recess until ten twenty. Back in the session, it's 10:20. Move to our next work session with Dubuque County Early Childhood for the purchase service application.
Send them present.
Abby Denderhart is going to be uh, zooming with us here remotely. Uh, Tara, Tara from a colleague organization that was here two weeks ago is unable, oh no, she is here. So they're going to be giving their presentation or, or available for questions or anything remotely via Zoom.
Are they invited to come personally to present to us?
Yes. So just for reasons that people sometimes Zoom, they're Zooming.
Hey Abby, go ahead.
Okay, hi. Um, yeah, I'll be honest, I'm not able to attend. I have COVID. Um, it's running rampant in my home, so I am here. Um, so we, and Tara is here as well. Um, she wasn't able, she had something going on this morning. Um, so the timely matter her, for her to get down there, um, didn't work. So um, thank you again for off, um, allowing us to come in and give you an update on the in-home childcare provider initiative. So just to recap, um, the, the goal of this program is to increase the number of regulated childcare providers in Dubuque County as though, as, as well as the number of quality childcare spaces. And so in partnership with Childcare Resource Referral, which is Tara, um, this initiative is to um, to new or unrest, unregistered childcare providers in Dubuque County. Um, that is committed to the registration process, the Department of Human Services by providing an in-home um, setting for childcare. So the first year, um, to give a review here, um, year one, we requested $60,000 to get 10 homes registered. Um, we um, were able to secure nine homes. Um, we originally had 10. Um, it dropped down to nine because uh, one of the registered um, ladies moved and then her new landlord wouldn't allow childcare. So we did meet that goal. Um, and that uh, there was 57 inquiries that year. We provided 10 new providers, nine were in Dubuque, one was in Dyersville, and that created 68 new spots. Um, so now year two, which we're in, which we actually received the funding December 2021, we've had 64 inquiries. Um, and our goal for the year two request of year through of three years is to get 15 new providers. We are currently at eight new providers and that created 60 new spaces. So we still have five months remaining to get seven more. Um, and Tara, do you want to kind of talk about what, where we're at um, with year two?
Sure. Thanks Abby. Uh, so like Abby said, we have had the inquiries. Uh, where we are right now is we have eight total. And as I've presented before, that means that there's some that are complete, some that are in the process, but eight that have um gone ahead and they are um, going to be registered. So we have, um, I apologize. This was a quick for me this morning. Um, so for year two, like she said, we have 64 inquiries. Of the eight new providers, we have four that are fully registered and we have received all their items and initial statements. We have three, uh, excuse me, four that have turned in their paperwork and have received their first round of items and they're waiting on their pre-inspections from DHS. So where that is, it means all their paperwork's in, um, tentatively approved low from our region. And then once DHS approved it, they slide it on to be pre-inspection and then we find out about it. So we are in a good spot. Um, some of the barriers, you know, that we continue to see is obviously time and childcare providers just making sure they're getting their trainings done before they get registered. Um, my staff, Sherry Kennedy does, she's our first point of contact, does a wonderful job of checking in. What do you need? We have people who come here to get on the computer or stuff like that. So we're helping them through the process. Um, and then of course, we, some of it's out of our control on how long it takes DHS to process. Although we have seen it moving fairly quickly now, so we're hopeful that those pre-inspections will happen fairly soon. Um, so tho- those are just barriers and those seem to be, um, you know, something that we can't really control, but we're trying to support. And I think that's, I think that's good. Um, you know, that's where we are right now. We get lots of calls. We're still getting calls. Um, I think 64 inquiries, that's, that's quite a bit. Um, and so we're, I had one this morning even, so we are still taking calls in regards to that. Um, I know that uh, you do like to hear also where our childcare providers are at uh, in regards to the county. And so I wanted to bring that up really quick for you. Uh, for this year, we actually targeted the county with billboards. And then one of my staff has been going to Dyersville to talk to, to get together with potential providers. So of those eight, we have one in Bernard, one in Piasta and one in New Vienna. And so of those eight, three are in the, in the county. So I wanted to share that too.
And Tara, I think that's a great point that you brought up about Sherry um, and the presentations that, that she's doing. So that's something that CCR went above and beyond and they're now presenting um, in areas throughout Dubuque County, talking about this program specifically and what that means. So I think that that information sessions um, have been very benefi- beneficial outside of the city of Dubuque and actually in the county. So that has been, they've done a wonderful job with that.
Any questions, Jay?
Uh, no, no specific questions, but uh, I was with you on that, that journey when we started this and then broke out. And I remember speaking to you two from my garage when I had uh, three college kids at school along with my, my wife working at home. Um, so I was relegated to the garage and I remember challenging saying, hey, you sure should be able to get this done. And it sounds like at least in the first couple of years here, we've, we've, we've made some significant uh, improvements related to childcare spots and, and home providers. So so thank you for your hard work and uh, your continued dedication to this.
Thank you.
So are you still looking at the 80,000, Abby?
Yes. So we, right now, um, so we finished year one, we're in year two. Um, and that funding came a little bit later than we anticipated. So we didn't actually receive the approval December 2021 for year two, which we're in right now. Um, and that's for $80,000. So that's what we're working on now. And then we did submit um, another application in request for uh, year three of the year three request, which is another $80,000 again, and that's for 15 new spots. But we wouldn't technically start that until we're complete with our year two. Um, and so that application's already been submitted as well.
Okay. Ian?
So explain to me um, how you spent $60,000 in year, in year one. What, tell, I need to know the stipend structure.
Oh, sure. Tara, do you want to go into that?
I sure can. Uh, so it's 10 providers at 5,000. And then we use, Abby can talk about the 10,000 that was used for marketing, correct Abby? And so what we did, that $5,000 is for initial purchases. What we do is we purchase fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, uh, carbon monoxide, no-touch thermometer and did I say fire extinguishers? Smoke alarms. So we purchased those things. So that's the first set that we give them. And then we also give them, after they pass the pre-inspection, they get cribs, crib sheets, cots, cot sheets. And so those uh, approximately equal about a thousand dollars there. And then the stipend structure is 2,000 upon com- compo- upon registration certificate received, 1,000 six months later and 1,000 at 18 months.
Do you have anyone who's at the 1,000 at 18 months?
We have had one. And we have, I just had, let me pull up.
And I guess that's what I kind of wanted to see was, you know, 60,000, 60,000, 80,000, what's that stream of income look like, right? So I don't know if you still need $80,000. I understand you want $80,000, but does this program support an additional $80,000?
So we have the eight, and so year one, eight initial stipends of the 2,000, excuse me. All initial stipends have been given out, given out. Um, 10 at $2,000. Then we have given out um, five of the six month stipends. And then we have given out one of the 18 month stipend. So I can't say we've spent all 60,000 because we're still in that process, but it is encumbered.
How much is in the count, the Dubuque County account for this program? What do you have as a balance moving forward?
Well, I would have to look up numbers specifically, um, because the 10,000 for year one was community outreach and that was 10,000 that was allocated for that. And that was um, spent. So I would have to look, see specifically with Tara what um, we have remaining with the stipends that are left there. So we know that there's that one person that um, registered, but then obviously she um, couldn't because of her, she moved and her landlord wouldn't let her continue. So she won't get that last stipend. And I don't know where she was at Tara specifically, but Tara and I could find out specifically what's remaining in the 60,000. And then for year two, which we're in right now, we submit the invoicing um, to add with um, all of the things that have to be um, paid out by the county, because you don't just give us the checks anymore. We have to submit that stuff. So I could tell you, you know, I could, give me a day and we can figure out what's remaining there.
And then this, this is a request for $80,000 and how many new new providers are you intending to contract with?
15. So it's $5,000 worth of stipends for 15 new providers. And then 5,000 for the community outreach.
Aaron, Abby, this is Supervisor Wickham. Um, I know on the federal level, uh, childcare is still an issue. I was just in a seminar with the SBA related to it. And the state also has grants available more for the centers and have allocated funding for it. Can you talk about our need in Dubuque County? What uh, and or maybe the loss of home providers we've seen over the last decade? Talk a little bit more about the need for this program. Do you still hear from the community that childcare is a need?
Uh, we sure do Jay. And I think uh, we've seen that more and more with uh, the governor putting out the business grant where businesses can apply and be part of childcare, either within a childcare um center, uh, you know, buying slots or having one onsite. So we are still seeing that. I, we have usually, and I don't, I, I apologize because we are at October 1st, but it does take a month or so to get our 10-year data, our five-year data. But I'm going to see if our data sheet is ready because that will tell us exactly what you're asking Jay, is where we are. When we first applied for this, I believe we had a five-year trend data where we had lost, um, I think it was approximately 30% of our childcare spaces. And so that also was one of the driving forces on, we have to do something. When we looked at those spaces, many of them were from homes. Um, and because homes were taking, uh, people were taking more positions outside of the home, so we had less child development homes. Um, I'm just checking real quick here to see if we have data sheets up. Abby, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
And you, you said October 1st, you meant August 1st um, for those numbers. That's okay. Um, no, and I just think, you know, another reason that we started this in-home provider um, initiative was because it's more affordable um, for many people um, than the actual centers. And this is a great way to encourage people to offer childcare in their homes, which is, tends to be more affordable for families, but in, and to still maintain the quality aspect of a childcare provider. So you know, that was, there, there's several reasons that this program um, was started. So just to make it a more affordable option for families as well.
But before you started this program, was it funded by somebody else?
No, several years ago, before I started in this position, so over three years ago, maybe it was closer to five. Um, Sherry Edwards, who was in my position uh, previously, they applied for a grant through the DRA. And it was a very similar structure and um, success of this program was a hundred percent. They were able to meet all of the benchmarks with their stipends. And that's, we came up with the stipend structure is that they get the thousand dollars of items uh, for the home, which is the carbon monoxide, fire extinguisher, all of those things. Then they get registered, then they get $2,000, then they get another thousand dollars. And so we found that that program uh, was a hundred percent successful. And so we thought that it was a good opportunity to bring back into the community um, to offer that. And Tara, you were, you dealt with it before me, so maybe you have more input.
So it's, it's an expensive way to make new slots for daycare. Um, I, I appreciate that there's a need. I'm well aware of that. And I appreciate that you have some success. So that's wonderful. I sit on your board and I'm glad to do so. But when this program comes to an end, and what is the next step?
We will continue to get registered providers. Uh, I think time will tell if the stipends were a driving force. Um, which I believe they are because I don't, I mean, we're when people call, sometimes that's what they ask about first. Um, and we do weed people out too. Um, so I, I can't, I don't know the answer to that. Um, we will continue to register providers, though there just won't be a stipend attached to it.
And I, you know, another, another reason that this was started was i- an incentive to people who were sitting on the fence about having this opportunity in their home, but not having the funds for the initial startup cost. Getting all of those materials like the fire extinguish, carbon monoxide, I mean, that stuff's expensive. And so be able to get them started and get them um, ready to rock and roll, that, that is what I think has created the most success. Um, but like Tara said, the, the, continue to register providers. It just, this right now, is this an incentive? Because there is such a need and what a great way for people who are maybe sitting on the fence or considering childcare to take that leap.
But the state of Iowa doesn't fund this program. Have we asked the state to fund this program?
I guess I'm, I'm wondering, do you mean through sources that we already have, like CCR and our dollars or to be kind of early childhood dollars?
Right. So when I'm in Dyersville for the legislative days and the state uh, House representatives and the state senators are there and they childcare is a priority, but they don't fund the program like we do. So they don't do this. They don't pay for those expensive items. But the county does. So I'm taking people's property tax dollars and spending it for a program that the state doesn't want to fund, right? I mean, that's, that's what this is. It's kind of another swap program.
Well, I think you two can talk about the state funding both their programs. So I think both those employees you're looking at are they've received funding directly from the state to be employed and manage this. And then the state is spending millions on childcare.
In their cut, their, the EC, the DCEC's state funding went down again.
Agree. Yeah, I wish it was more too.
Yeah.
But you know, maybe, I mean, is it true Tara and Abby, that both your entities are funded by the state of Iowa?
Yes.
Correct.
Early Childhood Iowa.
Yes, and we are funded through uh, formerly Department of Human Services, currently Department of Health and Human Services. My position.
State of Iowa is very, the state of Iowa is funding millions of dollars in childcare. So is the federal government. And this program is a local program and I'm very pleased we're part of it, but it's a very small part. And it's having good success.
I would say that the dollars that are, that come into uh, DCEC and also the dollars that we receive, a lot of them go to staffing. Um, there aren't extra dollars for supporting childcare providers like this. Uh, how you're doing it, this is a very unique way to support childcare providers. Uh, how, how we're getting our funding, how we're supporting providers is by staff. So my staff going out in the field, making sure that providers are registered, making sure they're getting their training. That's where the bulk of those dollars are going to. Uh, I think what you're requesting is that pot of money that we receive. Um, in order to do programs like this, we would need more dollars from the state, which we do advocate for. We do talk to legislative about um, in regards to maintaining our funding, but also increasing our funding. There was a 2% increase proposed for DCEC dollars, uh, and it was, or ECI, excuse me, dollars, and it was not. Uh, and it was, or ECI, excuse me, dollars, and it was not supported. Instead, we received, uh, in Dubuque, we received a ten percent discount or discount, excuse me, ten percent cut uh, for our DCEC dollars and those go to support our staff, uh, who do a wonderful job. But like I said, that's not something, uh, we can't support a program like this and our childcare providers, you know, this is something to support them.
Okay, uh, it doesn't, here, we have any further questions for you, Abby? Tara?
All right. Thank you very much. Great day.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to have you. Uh, next we have a work session, Dubuque County Energy District Purchase Service, Michaela.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to pull the mic down. Sorry if I make a speech noise. And then if you need to go up, this is, I'm Michaela Freiberger. I'm the program coordinator for the Dubuque County Energy District and today I brought with me.
Jacob Lucas, board member, uh, with the district.
So I first off want to thank all of you in your own unique ways for supporting our energy district. Uh, Chair Potoff, not only, uh, supporting us and, uh, entertaining this conversation, but also on your individual level as well, uh, with your solar arrays. And thank you very much for attending our event last night, just to learn a little bit more about how we can bridge energy and, um, conservation minded with our arts and culture community. And Jay, thank you very much last week, or two weeks ago actually, for saying, hey, this application looks very different than their American Rescue Plan. Um, and so let's bring them in and have them talk. So today I really want to kind of keep our comments brief, allow a lot of opportunity for questions. Um, but first off, you know, Anne, today you kept talking about opportunities that, um, just keep going by us and that we don't want to miss. And one, um, is that we applied this year as a Clean Energy Districts of Iowa to the Iowa Energy Center um, for their grant funding, which traditionally goes to colleges and universities. Um, and then also our Green Iowa program, similar to what we have here in Dubuque. And, uh, they told us to get some more data and come back and ask again next year. And so our partners to the north in Clayton County received a racing association funding to do a similar program. Their focus is more on small businesses and farms. And then also, um, we have our application to you today to talk about energy coaching. So if we are unable to continue to move forward, not only would we lose local state dollars, um, but also we are watching REAP programs, so the Rural Energy Audit Programs, um, looking for more accountability than what was previously asked of us. And our Energy District Network just lost our energy auditor. Um, so we have none at the moment, aside from Jacob and what he's doing in Clayton County. So this would give us federal dollars as equally coming to our community. But if we don't have people who are qualified and show that, um, measurable data, which is outlined in our application of what we can measure, uh, we would lose those two opportunities. Some of the dollars that would come to our community would be eighty thousand dollars and some of them would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So those are kind of numbers for you to keep in mind. Um, I also want to, I'm on number three. Um, number four. So I want to just reiterate, there's a difference between, um, our program that we have in front of you. And I'll let Jacob share a little bit about what he's doing versus programs like HACAP, um, and their reach with low income folks. Um, additionally, I think it's important to note, there is a difference between Green Iowa and what their services are. Um, and so I'm going to let Jacob talk, uh, talk a little bit about what he gets to do in Clayton County and then I'm willing to answer questions.
Thank you. Uh, as Michaela discussed, I'm assisting Clayton County on a similar initiative and providing energy coaching sessions to small businesses and nonprofits. Um, by and large, I helped develop the program, the assessment and the deliverable, uh, report. Um, it's been a great success. Um, I think I've, we've done, uh, completed twelve of these assessments thus far. Um, and the intent is to kind of follow up with these business owners and, and entities to see what improvements they've made based on our recommendations. And, you know, that way we can quantify and capture that data as far as e- energy savings, cost savings really. Obviously, in the current economic state, every penny matters as cost keeps going up. And, and informing, um, our, uh, rural farmers, uh, business owners, any entity really, on how, uh, they can improve their infrastructure, maybe some improvements they can make, um, to save them some real dollars. Uh, I guess is the aim here. Um, as opposed to some of the work that Green Iowa does, uh, it's more, uh, I guess, low cost, you know, uh, winterization, adding some weather stripping, um, putting plastic on the windows, things like that. Uh, there's an educational component to it, but this is a little more, a deeper dive as far as looking at their utility bills. Um, and putting some real dollar saving figures together for folks that, you know, really makes the light bulb go off and, and motivate someone to make some change.
And I would be remiss, since Supervisor Potoff, I have in my notes last time you were, um, talking about the utility companies and how, um, you know, isn't this something that they do? Our utility companies, um, since twenty eighteen and Senate File twenty-three eleven has passed, do not have to commit as many dollars towards energy efficiency specifically in homes. And so they have diverted those dollars, which previously would go into homes along with COVID as well and precautions, um, away from specific coaching, um, and going into people's homes. Additionally, we do have a municipality in Dubuque County and we also have an REC as well. And neither of them have offered that opportunity even in the past. So we, um, really want to focus on this being a rural community project. This is something where we really, really want to work with our rural small businesses and our rural farmers. So with that, I don't know if you have anything else, Jacob, but I'm willing to open it up for questions.
I guess I kind of failed to give some background myself. I'm an electrical engineer by trade. I work for a consultant, uh, here in town. Um, so that's where some of my technical knowledge kind of lends itself to this. And I'm also, you know, grew up in rural Dubuque County out near Banks and currently live near Durango. So, you know, these, you know, I've lived in a drafty old farmhouse. I've rented those in my college days. So I know that, you know, um, there's definitely improvements to be made and, and some of those folks just, that's kind of on the back burner. It's not something they're thinking about. You know, they're, they're trying to get through each day and, and manage their costs on their farm enterprise. And this is something that, a way that we can hopefully help them out.
What do you charge to do this coaching to a business?
For this, we've allocated five hundred dollars per session, uh, which is similar to what is Clayton County is offering, the energy coaches.
To do a home thing, how much?
Um, typically, I think we've got the same for that. And, and these are reduced rates, you know, uh, a, over the market, energy audit, full assessments, like two thousand dollars privately. So our intent is kind of to being able to train these coaches and obviously build that technical, um, service offering in the county, which it really is non-existent at this point, um, is also a, a goal. You know, targeting tradesmen who have an interest in energy efficiency, um, and, and give them kind of one more feather in their hat to be able to offer the service, whether through home inspections or just, you know, in their typical daily practice.
Well, you have the, like the Element Group, the Energy Group, they do audits or whatever. Alia did quit due to COVID. I was aware of that. Do they charge the same? What, what's the difference between those groups and this?
I guess I'm not familiar with the, the groups that you offer, but I guess what I have to go by is the Winna Chee County District Auditor, who recently left his position, was certified through the USDA to provide REAP, uh, you know, qualifying audits, uh, specifically on the egg side and, and they were approaching two thousand dollars per session.
Who, who's paying for this, Michaela? These, the, these auditors or whatever you want to call them, technicians? Are they employees or what are they?
Sure. So the way that we have it structured is so the first year, since we are looking to, uh, get achievable data, not only to recruit more audits through the federal government, um, with the REAP process, but also more audits through the Energy Center here in Iowa. We are asking our auditors, um, to put forth, um, ten to twenty percent, depends on what level they're looking to achieve, to get their certification. And then we are, um, as an energy district requesting that we have the auditors, um, work through us and we would reimburse them as, um, contracted services to complete these audits for us. Home audits would be valued at three hundred and fifty dollars, um, as Jacob's talking, you know, the, the businesses are two thousand dollars with REAP. Um, but we would be reimbursing them for five hundred dollars since we are covering their costs of education. Additionally, we're helping them to build a repertoire that they can pull from in the future if they choose to continue on outside of this grant or continue with, uh, other funding that we may receive, um, to literally have a toolkit and pick and choose from with their coaching, um, of other individuals, whether it be homeowners, small businesses or farmers. And just an anecdotal note too, we have received an uptick of calls, not only from homeowners, but also farmers, um, that are looking for services, um, which this program outlines. Um, in the last month, I've had four people reach out to me, which is a lot because I've never had that call before. Um, just because they really are finding right now, utility costs rising in addition to their home just not being as efficient. Um, budgets are really, really tight. So they're having to determine whether or not, um, they need to pay for food, medicine or their utility bills. And we, they're not eligible right now, um, just because they do make two thousand dollars more to apply for HACAP funding. And so with those conversations, I think it's really important that we recognize the impact. Number one, um, for energy efficiency with our homeowners, uh, traditionally, energy coaching sessions or energy efficiency updates can reduce twenty-five percent of their expenses. In addition to rural businesses and, um, farmers, it's, um, a really big number, but it's either twenty-five to fifty percent that their, um, energy burden can be reduced just from, um, simple sessions that we can have, um, kind of flow through the energy district, just like they did in Winna Chee County, um, with their rural energy audits and then also what they're doing in Clayton County with the small businesses. So it's real dollars and real impact, not only for us to build, um, you know, a workforce around this, but also it's real dollars and real sense to our neighbors who may be currently struggling as well.
What, what does the city of Dubuque do for, um, this coaching? What do they do?
Sure. So the city of Dubuque right now, um, is the partner for the Green Iowa Mariposa team. So their energy efficiency updates are just purely that. I know that they just hired, um, an additional consultant, uh, not consultant, an additional employee just to focus on the fifty percent reduction plan. And part of that is to work with partners like us, uh, to deploy other sorts of resources that they may have at their fingertips, like their building inspectors, um, to go into these homes and have those conversations. However, um, that fifty percent by twenty thirty, um, position just was filled and, um, they just were approved of by city council. So we're looking forward to that discussion and asking them how they're planning on working in the city. Um, and working with that plan, which talks about, um, home energy efficiency, small business energy efficiency. We don't really have, um, that farm component necessarily in the city, um, to reduce our footprint, um, in our city as well.
How is this different? Can you tell me what we funded in April and then what, how this is different or how they work together?
Sure. Um, so we in April approved, um, had an approval of the American Rescue Plan dollars to go towards our Renew Dubuque program, um, which is now expanded into Dubuque County. What that does is it provides a solar renewable energy certificate for low to moderate income, um, residents within Dubuque County. What it is, um, traditionally is the homeowner goes and gets, um, a quote and we work with the, um, homeowner to go through a couple of installers. Uh, that quote also includes items that we've recruited to have the cost, uh, decreased. And then we then provide them with a solar renewable energy certificate. Often that certificate is about half of the cost of their solar array. Um, and that certificate, um, program underneath of Renew Dubuque is something you guys funded. And then the difference is this program focuses more on recruitment of energy efficiency programming, not only in residential, but we're really going to start to focus on, um, how we can reach our renters and those who are on properties that they may not own with energy efficiency measures. Um, and then this also allows us to enter into the small business and farm world where the solar program that we have focuses just on solar installs on homeowners in Dubuque County.
Just to add, I think this component could lead into that potentially, you know, as part of this energy coaching assessment, uh, say a homeowner may be interested and, and we determine that it's a suitable application for solar. Then they could perhaps pursue their renewed DBQ project, um, and have some of that incentivized and, and more so use the energy district as, as a reference to guide them through that process.
Basically, these are, this is a pilot program. Is that right? That this has not been done before? Is that correct?
In Dubuque County. It is being done in Clayton County.
For how many years in Clayton County?
They are in their full first year. In addition, um, there is a, there is an analyst. Um, it's previously known as audits, but now they're changing the term to coaches because people are afraid of audits. Um, and so, uh, he had been doing that in Winna Chee County specifically for about six years before he moved on.
So we are looking at new programs. So the fact that, you know, I'm stumbling over some of this is because it's new and the words are changing, right? So an energy coach, and to figure out what an energy coach might be, it's not an auditor anymore, but it's, it's people, we're going to train people and then they're going to stay. Who's, who employs them?
So they would work through the Dubuque County Energy District. So we would be the ones, uh, recruiting those, um, individuals to be those energy coaches. And after they have received their education and their stipends are complete, again, we're looking for other funding to help, uh, lower the cost to our homeowners, our businesses and our farmers in the county. Um, and so they would still be funded through the Dubuque County Energy District if we secure other funds. Otherwise, they would be individual contractors, um, who we would, if we've received the phone calls like I've been receiving, refer people to. Um, at this time, we just don't have any incentives to get people on board to do these things. Um, and to get a couple, their feet wet with doing a couple of these coaching sessions here in Dubuque County.
So you don't employ anyone. You won't have an employee. You don't pay wages. You're paying stipends to people who do this in addition to some other job that they do. Is that right?
Correct. They will not be like a full-time or part-time employee.
So we're trying to build a skill set. Is that what we're doing? It's three individuals and we're going to pay for their certifications, I think. We're paying for a good portion of that as they get certified to do these energy audits.
Correct. That is the incentive we're providing them.
And this is not being done by the energy companies?
Yeah.
Hold on, Supervisor Potoff's question. I'm not sure if you know the, the deep dive on this, but when you talk about Clayton County, Winna Chee County, their, their funding for these coaches or auditors, are they coming from their general basic funds or did they receive a grant? Do you have any knowledge of that? I know it's not your county, but any knowledge you have of those?
So Winna Chee has been funded, um, through various grants. And so they were the ones who kind of housed our REAP grant. Um, so they received a federal fund because Joel had been doing the work, which was privately funded from private donors. Um, and so with them, they've been an energy district for ten years, almost eleven years now. And so their community had found value. And so he had been doing the work for about five years. Um, so about five or six years after they started, he started working on doing that. In Clayton County, they did receive a racing, um, grant and this year, um, they are applying again for something different. But again, we all work together to apply to the state for the Energy Center Grant and they're like, come back with more data. Um, and so I think that's kind of, you know, where this is a, a request that you see in front of you. And, and it says on here, it's a one-time request because we see the value in building that, um, and looking forward and chasing, um, other community dollars to bring in.
And, well, go ahead. I just wanted to add one thing. As far as Winna Chee example, um, it, hit the energy services and audit services provided up there by their technicians self-sustained. So he was a full-time employee. You know, it, it started off with some, some grant dollars, um, but you know, as they gained traction, it was a self-sustaining, you know, offering that service through the county at that, you know, rate of two thousand dollars like exam, uh, mentioned earlier.
And a follow-up question on my, your numbers. You, you mentioned fifty-four residents and then twenty-seven farms or indoor businesses a couple times in the application. Where do those numbers come from? What's the, what's the significance of those numbers?
So we, and talking with, um, our partners who have been doing this for a while, asked what's a reasonable number for each of the coaches to complete each month. We recognize that, um, we are having training starting in October, just based on how it's completed in our cycles. And so we want to get these people ready to go now. Um, so when it comes October, we're not waiting for the next training cycle, which would be late April next year. Um, and so we can complete those fifty-four sessions based on having each of those do three energy audits themselves or, um, with the specific farm to business sections, that would be the person who's energy. Or with the specific farm to business sections, that would be the person who is energy star trained as well. So we really asked, you know, how many can they typically do? We looked at our capacity in our county to see, you know, who we're planning on recruiting for this position and what their capacity would be. Someone professional like Jacob. Also, we have, you know, graduated, if we would call it. And our Green Iowa AmeriCorps team who are looking for jobs now because they end in September. So this gives them an opportunity as well to kind of have another job, but then also continue on and move forward in the next step as well. So professionally, we just kind of felt that, you know, that, that pace and that track would be. You know, not only sustainable for them to build a toolkit, but also great for us as well to get out into the county and do those.
Thank you.
Yes, it just, you brought up, you know, people. Having to decide whether to get medicine or food. You see $350 cost to have this audit on it. That's a big decision then, you know, that's a lot of money.
So in our grant application, we are covering the costs of that 350. We're asking. We are asking Dubuque County to cover 54 residential coaching sessions.
We're paying that fee.
And we would pay that fee as through, yeah, we would pay the fee from you guys, correct?
Businesses too, then, the 27 businesses?
That is correct.
That's for $55,000. And in here you talk about that it's, you would like it to be 100% funded. And if it's not, then you'll have to scale back on how many coaches you bring on or how many stipends you can pay for work performed.
That is correct, and you will note that we do provide kind of a budget analysis. That we do have our coaches invested in this program. So it's not just like, oh, I'm going to do these coaching sessions and I have no skin in the game. So we do ask them to provide some of that as well. And I think that's really valuable conversations that we've had internally. But then also it's very valuable to note, you know, Jacob was talking that eventually they cannot charge $2,000 for this farm. Where we're just providing them a smaller stipend, just so, because we did cover some of their education costs. But we're also helping them build a toolkit for those $2,000 when they go out on their own.
After they get trained, do they have a commitment with you? Is there some kind of a, they don't? No, you, you get them certified and they just.
Yeah, not, not after the, I guess, completion of this program. The, the, you know, idea and long-term goal would be to, you know, have it helps self-sustain itself and get enough, you know, interest in the county. To be able to hire them to the board staff.
And just a note too, when we were doing our REAP audits, which is something that you had funded in the past as a board of supervisors. Not only my role, but also the REAP funding. We were able to secure businesses and farms alike to complete these tasks. But we only have one person who could complete that throughout the whole Energy District network. And so we have, you know, still some commitments that we're fulfilling with following up and making sure that, you know. It's not just, here's a plan, it's this coaching is really truly valuable. And so we have many businesses and farmers who find that much more valuable than us just walking in the door saying, here's your program. Good luck. And this provides just that next level of service that we can do to reduce not only our carbon footprint. But also our, our usage and our consumption of energy in our county as well.
Ideal for me would be some kind of a sustainability. Energy. Assessment or something that we would have a plan. You know, we, these come before us, Michaela, this is, will be the third program related to green energy that I've been approached to fund. But we, we just don't have a net, we don't have a, a plan or a, a goal to see how we're doing to fit anything, right? So you're saying, you know, we don't have, you don't have enough data to even start to get these other funds that I want you to go get, right? I don't want Dubuque County to be paying for this every step, I don't. But I can't even see the picture yet of what it is that, that we want to achieve in common. But I think part of that is that the county has never really, I don't think, stood still and said, this is an important. Process and we'd like to have our own outcomes or deliverables of what we're trying to say. We did that in the watershed, right? We said, this is what we want to do, this is the watershed program, this is what we're trying to do. We didn't hire anybody, did that with the water and soil commissioners. But I don't see the big picture yet here. And but it sounds like that's what this is really, it's the opportunity to start building the big picture.
It's somewhere where my mind went as well. So, you know, from a county vantage point related to energy efficiency and reducing our footprint, we've done a few things. So we, we've done some solar projects on our, our shops in Farley and Pia, excuse me, Farley in the West End. But otherwise, you know, I think our buildings and just our travel and all that is probably not the most efficient. Where we rent and or old courthouses don't tend to be real, real efficient either. So I think th- these are funds and this would be an initiative that we could, we could fund. And what I like is it wouldn't be internal. So it wouldn't be internal government, it would actually be external where you'd be hopefully improving the position of the citizen, resident. Or the farmer or the business in giving them the knowledge and awareness programs that already exist. And so while it would be open to a overarching plan, one, that's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars. And you still just have a plan, you haven't engaged the community much. And then two, it's going to say, yeah, make all these changes and improvements and spend millions of dollars on your infrastructure, Dubuque County. Or, you know. Get out to, you know, change out your fleet of various things. So I like this program, it's modest and it's touching the citizens and the residents who, who are responsible for the property tax dollars. So I, I like that connection and at this moment, I, I would be in support of.
Guess on your, the county purchase of service, 55,000, 225. Administration, 12,000.
That's pretty high, I think.
So in the past, the Board of Supervisors has funded the Dubuque County Energy District with $17,000 for just administration only. Which is how I was able to be hired as a part-time employee. So we did put some skin in the game, so we do have $4,000 that. Or I'm sorry, we have $8,000 that we're matching of that specifically for this program alone with me. And so I think, you know, not only showing that in the past, we've asked for much more just for my part-time position. We recognize where we are in time and space. This is a very specific program, expanding what I've done in the past. But then also that we have our own skin in the game is something that's, you know, what we recognize is really important for, you know, responsible dollar usage.
I would add that, you know, from my experience in Clayton County, one of the setbacks and drawbacks that I've experienced is just the marketing effort. You know, we've got, I said, we've done 12, their goal is 25, kind of stalled out at a certain point. Those first 12 were, we were the folks that had already, you know, cognizant of energy efficiency and had already made a lot of those upgrades. I think our real target is to get out into the county and that's going to be some targeted marketing and, you know.
Administration.
Administration, you know, time for Michaela to get out there, to Farley, Upworth, Cascade, what have you, to. Extension off as what, you know, try to meet these people where they are to, to gain some interest.
Nothing further, it sounds, thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you, Jacob. What is the process on the last two and we'll go to the third one? Do we want those to come back? Or I don't see necessarily. Discussion tentative decisions, I guess we can make a tentative decision. What was the board feel about those, just to wrap them up, do we need more information? Do we want to make a decision?
And on the Dubuque County Early Childhood, what are your feelings?
I'm, I would, they're not here, we didn't have a discussion when they were present, but. They really are working on this program and there's not anything like it. So I, I think it was important to have them come here and they kind of be put through the steps. To show the allocation of the money and what's been spent, what's been achieved. That's, I don't like it when we enter into three-year agreements and they just go away and they just send invoice for the next year, right? That's not how this works, so. They are creating spots, they are expensive spots. That's what I said when we began the program several years ago. What else are we going to do?
Need the spots.
Comes to local government at some point to be a partner, to try something that, to see if it can achieve a goal. They are counting back and they are doing the work and the board meets their, other than in the summer, the board meets monthly. Put people on the board, asking the right questions. Program is very worthwhile, I would support that third year of the program, I'm convinced of that. Heard on the board prior to me.
Yeah, I think it's working and would justify the funding for the continued year, so that's where I'm at with that, I would support those funding.
Do you want a motion on it, Ed, bring it up?
Technical issue?
This is, this is Ed, this is the, the list of applications for purchase of service funds. So within the, the standpoint that the competitive purchase of service program. Has a, a budget of $600,000. And so far, of those projects at the top, you've allocated 500 and. Allocated 503,501. So that leaves roughly $97,000, $96,000.
Applications are out there.
I, I think that you're, you, you were, you're finishing them out, you have, you have. Essentially dealt with all of them. There's another informational work session about the $20,000 in the Historical Society Purchase of Service. And there was an application that came in there from the Dubuque County Historical Society for $15,000. But I think they were anticipating that it would be dealt with in that outside the $600,000, inside the $20,000. Budget line item that you had for operational support of historical societies. So among those, I think that there are only two left, the two that you heard from today. Trying to figure out if, if you wanted to fund them and at what amount. And the amount of the $600,000 you have left is 96,000 and something.
But another subtext would that be, there's other funding that you mentioned. That's correctly used to be called purchase of service and now no longer is. And so it's, we're not, we're not really being true to the $600,000 number in my opinion, but I'm for those programs. But the spreadsheet is what, I see 765,000 as a total, plus the other. Six or seven municipal items, which we've identified as ARPA, fair enough. So, so either way, I mean, the funding is going back and forth, but, so I wouldn't. Maybe Stella can comment on related to the $600,000 mark. But what you're saying is technically we have in this bucket 97,000 left. 96,500, okay.
Could potentially fund some of Green Energy's requests, just to add it on to their ARPA request. You know, we're still working through an ARPA contract with them, this could be, it's the same people, isn't it, Ed? You could say there's a line item that, that there's, we're an additional $20,000 or whatever for their green coaching. Their energy coaching, that could be moved to ARPA. I do have interest in trying to keep this at $600,000. Be nice to stay at a number that we set. A world where numbers are big and, and it seems that people are looking for some accountability.
I think that sounds wonderful, but we've just, you know, we're going to stay at 600,000, but don't pay attention to this list that used to be part of it. So it's, we're, we're, we're over 600,000 historically from where I sat, but that's, that's fine, I supported the initiatives. I just don't. There's a bunch of buckets and a bunch of money and we have been, been very fluid and. Purposeful in funding many applications, we're probably well over 50 now. You include both buckets, both ARPA and purchase of services, we probably have close to 60. About 60 different applications, which is good.
It's the. Energy District's other application. If we would combine these two, you'd have to do two contracts yet, or you would be able to put it under one contract?
Do whatever you want, if you wanted one, you could do.
Hey, would, would it be easier for them having it under one contract instead of two different contracts, is what I'm saying.
Yes, it would be easier probably for one.
Right, so.
You know, show them my math, I'd like to do the $80,000 to the third year commitment to Dubuque County Early Childhood. And then that remove, that brings this purchase of services account down to $19,000, right? And I'd like to do more than that for the green energy audits.
Right, would do the, would just attach it to their ARP swap funds, I guess is what I should say. That way they're only going to have one contract, they're not going to be dealing with two different contracts.
So maybe we break it down that if we have consensus on 80,000 for Dubuque County Early Childhood, that's a number. And then the board is asking to honor the Energy District in. In how the budget would allow, because I understand that we have budgeted 600,000 in a bucket and Stella has to make that bucket sit over here. Let's go to the auditors. Is that what we're talking about? Funding bolt, so.
Right, funding bolt, we just fund the. Energy District out of the swap funds with their other ARP funds, that they just have one contract. Because they have two different applications.
Or they're agreed for the 55,000 or for the balance of the, what's left of the purchase of services, which is 90,000.
For the 55,000.
Okay, and so then just have a portion, a portion would be purchase of services and a portion would be ARPA or all ARPA. I mean, swap funds, sorry.
I think that would all.
Yeah, whatever.
55,000 would all be.
Have 600,000 bucket that's going to go to the state of Iowa that says, this is what we budgeted, that can't exceed that amount, correct?
Yes, so the easiest way probably to do it is not split it. If you split it, we'll do two different contracts. So if you're going to split funding between competitive purchase of service and swap purchase of service, we do two contracts for them.
No, you just combine it to the rescue fund swap. And then we'd have a balance, 19,500 or whatever in the purchase of service bucket. And we could claim we spent less than $600,000 in purchase of services. Don't quote me on that then.
I guess I wanted to make sure, I should have brought this up with Michaela, that this is a rural project. More, unless the city wants to jump on board and like they did with the last one.
I would be open to, to having, you know, at least, at least 50, 50, if not more. You know, if we wanted to identify more of a, because they do have a, a program like this or similar to this, as Michaela mentioned, in the city of Dubuque. But.
Certainly to say it was outside the city of Dubuque, this is growing it outside the city of Dubuque. That's what I thought this program was.
Right, I kind of heard that, but I didn't hear anything, you know, that would prohibit them from working in the city of Dubuque. So if we.
We can put it in the contract.
If we want to do that. I don't know if I would totally shut off the city of Dubuque, didn't read that in their application. These are general basic dollars and.
As you were talking. As you were talking, rural farms and small businesses, but then she also has underserved areas as well.
Yeah.
Now, if that's city, well, then the city should be partnering with us also.
Yeah, it sounds like we're supportive, I I would be open to if we wanted to to, you know, kind of send direction on a percentage or something, I think that's would be fair, I don't know if it'd be wise just to. Totally shut it out, but uh, if we wanted to do a fifty-fifty or seventy-thirty in the rural county area outside city of Dubuque, I'd be open to those.
Twenty-seven farm businesses, well.
Most likely they'll all be rural.
Businesses could be in the city too.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but the fifty-four residential rural or underserved communities.
What about saying something that, uh, you know, no less than fifty percent of the recipients shall reside outside the city of Dubuque?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine.
Catch that to. Directions. They're acceptable to those terms? Are we good on those two?
Do you want any uh, motions on that or not?
That you, you don't, you don't necessarily need to, so just to make sure that that we are clear. You're asking for um, the eighty thousand dollars for the uh, Dubuque County Early Childhood. Uh, through the competitive purchase of service, the six hundred thousand dollars. And the fifty-five thousand and a little bit of change from the Energy District. From, to be added to their previous award that you had made. That would be paid out of the swap fund.
Right.
Just want to make sure everybody's saying that's what we'll do.
Yep.
Next week.
And the work session, distribution of the Historical Society Purchase of Service Funds. That was fine with the.
I think they got their money, they got six hundred thousand dollars and I'm happy they applied for a purchase of services, but I don't. Support giving money to the River Museum, they had six hundred thousand dollars. ARPA.
Have the.
Phone away on. Is there a document in there?
There, there.
Yeah.
Historical Societies discussion.
Yeah, I'm trying to get my.
Was fifteen thousand and a thousand and a thousand.
If you could go.
Well, so the River Museum is the Dubuque Historical Society, I'm taking it.
It's a request for admissions to the River Museum. I think it's a request for admission to the River Museum.
The. The, the supervisors, and I, there's a supporting memo in the packet. The supervisors at budget time allocated twenty thousand dollars for the Historical Societies. But did not specify in how that would play out between the various Historical Societies, there are six.
Oh, I remember.
And um. What? And the reason that that the budget director has guided you in this direction is that. Um, the state code sort of shows you that they, that support of those actually has its own um, uh, recognized public purpose. Preserving history, making it available as an educational thing for the public. What's, um, what we've also asked groups to do when they, um, e- even through a situation like. This is not that we will just cut you a check, we've asked them to um, identify that support for some sort of project. Some sort of thing that we can, is a payable, um, that isn't just strictly. Overhead or operating assistance. The Dubuque County Historical Society, uh, based on that, when they submitted an application for fifteen thousand dollars. Um, uh, they targeted that to a project and the one that they identified was one to provide. Um. Assistance, membership assistance to area uh, youth or families that otherwise would not be able to afford that, so. They've selected that as the way to um, be, to invoice us for something that we'd go along with that. Because we've asked them not to do it just for just general operating. Last year, for them, it was, I believe, a sidewalk at the ham house. Um, that was a discreet option in a larger project that they were doing that we could identify as the thing that we were providing support to at the county. So I, uh, the supervisors asked and I uh, uh, reached out to each of the Historical Societies. For their feedback, because you were looking for a little bit of feedback, similar to how you do Tom Hancock. Um, to find a a recommendation back to the board on how to distribute those Tom Hancock funds. And doing something similar with the Historical Societies, we did not meet in person, however, I did reach out by email to to all of them. And I uh, further down in this memo, I received four uh, responses back, I, this morning received one from, from Farley. Um, and their director there said, we really don't have an opinion on that right now. Um, but I did talk with her on the phone a couple times to explain this, so.
If you go to your, your chart, so what you're saying is that certainly. Between Dyersville, Upworth and New Vienna, they voluntarily agreed to say a majority of this should go to Dubuque.
Um, yes, historically, that, that, well, it, um, yes and and no, actually, what Dubuque County Historical Society did was ask for less than they normally have. That normally they've asked for seventeen thousand.
Maybe I'm asking about Dyersville, Upworth and New Vienna.
And, and.
Columns represent.
And that's correct, and they historically have each of those other uh, Historical Societies, the smaller ones have received seven hundred and. Twenty dollars, and so actually they're getting more.
You asked them.
Yes.
How much each one would do and it was, you know, they, they were free to put their numbers in, right?
Yes, they were, I.
Okay, so I mean, I like that, that shows that they, they recognize the the value of other Historic Societies, that's good. And there, there are obviously at least three of them are recognizing that Dubuque County should get more.
In Dyersville's case, they have written to us a few times and contacted me repeatedly, they need help with operational costs as well. Which is what this funding can be also. So when they show the four thousand dollars to themselves, three thousand dollars to New Vienna, they are reflecting the need. Outside of the city of Dubuque, in addition to the largest portion going to the Dubuque County Historical Society. When the Historical Society Dubuque asks for the funding for admissions to the River Museum, I personally see that as part of. The large gift we already gave them through ARPA, right? It's not as if they're doing a specific project or a thing, it's admissions to the museum. And, you know, there's a lot of history in the Historical Society discussion that goes back many years about how we got here and it's all incredibly. Convoluted, but um, if we are going forward under some measure, I would adopt the Dyersville proposal. Simply because I think it shows the most understanding of the inequities that those smaller organizations face.
I would generally support that, the only nuance, and maybe it's the first time through and maybe it was emails, but New Vienna didn't even put theirs at three thousand dollars. So, you know, so it's, New Vienna didn't even ask for three thousand dollars, at least that's the way I'm interpreting it. But, so I mean, it, I mean, it could have been, they didn't know was really available, I I don't know. Um, yeah, I'm I'm fine with the Dyersville proposal, I think it, you know, it's less with this Dubuque County and uh. Gives a little more to two other entities. Um, but it's, 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 I I think we asked you to try to get some consensus and I'm sure that's challenging the first time, so I'm not looking for a perfect matrix. But I'm I'm comfortable with Dyersville as well.
The uh. Did give. River Museum money, we also gave Dyersville money and I believe we gave New Vienna ARP money also, if I'm not mistaken, right? For uh, redoing.
Maybe that's why New Vienna said we want to need a thousand bucks now.
These are buildings that are, that are actually open and ongoing.
Saying we gave them funding also.
Yeah, they did, and that might be why New Vienna said, hey, I know we've received funding, we'll just take our normal, you know, thousand bucks.
I wouldn't have any problem giving Dyersville a little extra, you know. They. Like I said, New Vienna didn't even put in for the extras, so as far as I'm concerned, they, they're happy with the thousand, we give them a thousand. If we go with thirteen thousand to Dubuque and three thousand, the Dyersville, a thousand for the rest.
Now you're giving money to Farley and they didn't ask for anything and money to Tri-County, they didn't even participate, which, you know, it's a first-year program. It's hard to give anybody zero, but they.
I'm not saying giving them zero, I, I, Dyersville's basically the largest. Down in our county at this point, the piazza passes them, I guess, but uh. They may need a few little extra, I understand that.
I'm comfortable with either of you two proposals, I think we're getting down to the nitty-gritty, um, but uh. They're, they're both valid.
If, if there's a a pause momentarily here, I would add that in my communication with these Historical Districts, uh, and some of the conversations I had. Um, I think in uh, uh, making an effort to reach out to them, I've developed some relationships with several of these already. But I think the idea would be that this fall, uh, during budget time, as opposed to potentially doing it now. Uh, there, there could be an opportunity for for them collectively to more effectively um, inform the board of what they see their needs are. So at at budget time, you, you, you may have a a better idea of what you're doing um, directly during that budget season as opposed to doing it. On the, on the backside like this, so.
And maybe then we'll get no good deed goes unpunished, I just read Upworth's historical document just this weekend at my parents' house. And so they'll probably be like, why did we only get a thousand dollars and they got three thousand? And so people hear that this fall.
And uh, I, I, I look forward to working with all of my colleagues that I, that I've uh, uh, begun working with at these Historical Societies on. On something to help you through this process.
I think we're being responsive, so I was tongue-in-cheek, we're being responsive to what some of the Historical Societies are saying their greater needs are. And so, you know, so they're receiving additional funding.
I still would, I would make a motion to adopt the Dyersville proposal. I think they best understand the needs out in the county.
I will second that.
And the motion was second to accept the Dyersville proposal for uh, historical funding. Which is ten thousand to the Dubuque County Historical Society, four thousand Dyersville Area Historical Society, a thousand for the Upworth. Historical, thousand to Farley, three thousand New Vienna and a thousand to Tri-County, for a total of twenty thousand, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Bring that resolution back for you next week.
Thank you.
Is all we have, unless my colleagues have anything to discuss further. Put you to adjourn.
Can we have a clerical moment, are we expecting to have a closed session next week? We don't have an auditor this week, are we expecting to have a closed session on, on our administration? We're three sitting here, can we agree we'll have a closed session about the HR administration applications?
Regarding the, yeah, Kevin's going to be back for the.
If we need a closed session, I I, I request it would just be on the agenda to discuss the process. Um, but if there's things that require closed session that I'm not aware of, I'm open to that.
I would just join Jay, let's just get it on the, for next week, while we're three here, let's get it on for next week, cuts down the conversations and emails.
Conversation, I'll move forward with it.
Oh, looking forward.
Second to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye, we stand adjourned, thank you everyone.
Your first one?
Hurry, did you sign this already? Is there another one or?